September 16th, 2024, City of Vandalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of September 3rd, along with the council meeting minutes of September 3rd. Are there any comments or corrections?
Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, where this evening we have a presentation by Kerry Scarf, the Chief of Planning and Projects at Five Rivers Metro Park. Let me get it out.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Good evening, council. I am here this evening to share with you information about Five Rivers Metro Parks, give you some updates, and let you know that we have a levy on the ballot. So, next slide. Five Rivers Metro Parks began way back in 1963, when some foresightful community leaders recognized that there was a lot of sprawl happening in this area, a lot of development, and formed this park district for principally the preservation of open space and then connecting people to the nature within that open space. Next slide. And so our mission as a conservation-based park district here in Montgomery County is to protect the region's natural heritage and provide experiences that inspire a personal connection with nature. And as children are spending more and more hours in front of a screen daily, spending five hours a day on social media, we feel like our mission is critical to their health and well-being, as well as that of their families. Next slide. So we have 18 metro parks, eight bikeways as part of our regional trail system, and it's the largest in the nation. And of course, Vandalia has its, almost its own metro park with Taylorsville Metro Park. And we've been working with your staff for a few years now to make that connection from the heart of Vandalia directly over to Taylorsville Metro Park with a bikeway. And we're excited that that's going to be getting underway here soon. Next slide. We have three pillars at Five Rivers Metro Parks: conservation, recreation, and education. In our conservation, by our own edict, 90% of the land that we protect, 16,000 acres, we manage as natural area. And so we're providing forests, wetlands, prairies to the community and to the wildlife that exists here, focusing largely, as our name insinuates, on the river corridors that provide those open-space corridors. They're so important. Next slide. Through education, we are teaching kids about nature. As they have fewer and fewer opportunities, and they don't grow up, as many of us did, going outside and playing until the streetlights came on, we're using education to get these kids connected to nature, as many of us did as children just naturally. Next slide. And then through recreation, we're providing opportunities for families to spend time together outside, for individuals who maybe are considering Dayton as a place where they can stay after college or come to build their careers, providing outdoor recreation as a strong quality of life asset to attract and retain talent in the region, workforce talent. Next slide. And then events that the community can gather around and build community around nature and around the outdoors, whether it's at Riverside Metro Park or here at the Midwest Outdoor Experience at Eastwood Metro Park. We provide those events where the community can come together. Next slide. So, Metro Parks is about quality of life. And as we have, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with this, as local governments struggle with our budgets, Metro Parks has stretched our dollars for over a decade now in an effort to maintain the quality of our services and the quality of our facilities and our parks, our trails. And at this point, we recognize that the only way we can continue to provide the services that we provide is to put a levy on the ballot. So we will have a levy on the ballot, a 1.0 mil levy on the ballot in November, asking the voters to help us continue to provide that level of service. We feel that Metro Parks is about quality of life in the sense that we do offer an opportunity for physical, mental, and emotional health. And we saw that so much during the pandemic, when nature was about the only thing that was open. We offer hiking, picnicking, fishing, cycling, birding, paddling, so many other activities that you can do outside. And so we feel like we offer something for everyone across all walks of life, all ages. Next slide. And along those lines, then, we keep these metro parks accessible for all. Of Montgomery County residents, over 300,000 each year make use of the metro parks, resulting in over 2 million of visits to our parks a year. We offer almost 200 miles of trails of different kind, and 94% of Montgomery County residents are with a 10-minute drive of a metro park. I suspect that everyone in the city of Vandalia between Taylorsville and Englewood is within a 10-minute drive of a metro park. Next slide. What the, a passage of the levy in November would mean is that metro parks could continue to provide the facilities at a level of quality that the community is currently used to, parks that are clean and safe. We would be able to continue to protect our natural areas, our wildlife corridors, our water quality. We would continue to provide the educational and recreational events that we currently do, and keep our knowledgeable and helpful staff, essentially keeping metro parks at the level of quality that they are now, and also putting us in a position to continue to evolve with society and our community as it changes through the years. Next slide. If the levy doesn't pass, we won't be able to keep our facilities repaired. We're already compromised in some areas. We already have some key facilities that we've had to close because we don't have the money to replace them. We are in a spot where we have a significant backlog of repair and replacement, such that if we don't pass the levy, we may slip further behind to the extent that we won't be able to catch up for decades, actually. We will be unable to provide the programs and events at the level that we do now and to protect our water quality and wildlife corridors as we do now. And we will need to, as we have for a number of years, cut our spending in many areas, we would, including personnel, because that's always your largest expense. We would continue to have to keep those positions and additional positions open to balance our budgets as we go forward. Next slide. So, to provide basic information about election day, the voter registration deadline is coming up, October 7th. You can check your voting locations with the Board of Elections. Early voting begins October 8th, and then Election Day, of course, is Tuesday, November 5th. Next slide. And I can't, by law, advocate for this issue, because I'm representing Five Rivers Metro Parks right now. An independent campaign committee, the Five Rivers Metro Parks Levy Committee, is formed to do so. And to contact the campaign committee, you can visit their website there, voteforfive rivers.org. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Anyone have any questions?
We all certainly appreciate the Five River Metro Park, especially when it's right here in our own backyard, and I know many in the community take advantage of it. So we appreciate that, and we understand the need, we do.
Good, good. And thank you for your partnership on that bikeway. It's been a pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have an introduction. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my pleasure to introduce our newest employee. I'm sure that he won't mind standing right now, so that we can all recognize him. This is Gage Shiflett. He's our newest employee in the Public Works Division. He has experience with the operation of numerous heavy equipment items, such as skid loaders, backhoes, and bulldozers and dump trucks. He's also experienced in welding and is trained in trenching and shoring practices. So we're very pleased to have him. In his short time he's been here with the department and with the city, he's been a valuable asset, and we look forward to his long career here at City of Vandalia. So please welcome Gage Shiflett.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the Vandalia team. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly, and your comment.
My name is Chris Allen. This is my wife, Shelley. And I pastor, we pastor, the Hoopland Church down on the south side of Miller Lane. And we just wanted to make an announcement that we're going to take an acre of our property and set it aside for a park on Miller Lane. And we're going to call it Square Park. And we're not really asking anything specific from Vandalia. We just wanted to make it known that we're going to do that, and we're going to see if we can raise some capital to make that a really nice space. We already have playground equipment that's been procured, and we're going to be installing that and putting up some trees. And maybe we can even partner with Vandalia by having you permit the property, and people can use it and come out and do things from the community down there. And so that's what we're going to be working. And I think it's going to be great, hopefully. So that's all we have.
Well, thanks. That sounds like good news, and we look forward to watching it develop.
Thank you.
All right. And this is our time in the program, that if you don't want to hang around for all of this evening's business, we can exit. I like to say it before people just start getting up and walking out. All right, next we have the city manager's report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple items for you. First, October is Fire Prevention Month, and in honor of that, our Fire Division will host an open house on Sunday, October 6th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Fire Station One at 8705 Peters Pike. And just wanted to mention again that we have established our budget workshop schedule. The workshops will be held on Monday, October 7th, and Monday, October 21st. They will start at 4:00 p.m. They'll be held in the basement here of the Municipal Building. We will meet from 4:00 until we go into study session, and then council, and then come back after the council meeting as needed on both days. And we also have a hold on October 29th, if we need to go into that date as well. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. And we have no action items, nor do we have any old business. And that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 24-R-53. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution consenting and authorizing cooperation with Ohio Department of Transportation regarding ODOT Project PID 120890, MOT, Taylorsville Access Road Phase 1.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Ohio Department of Transportation District 7 has a project scheduled to start in fiscal year 2025. The project will improve the existing Taylorsville Dam River Access Road. It's on the north side of the dam near the Great Miami River. Since this roadway project falls within the city of Vandalia, ODOT District 7 is asking for approval of a resolution of consent for them to perform this work. The city will have no cost in the work. This is just allowing them to perform the work within our city limits.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 24-R-53.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Fars, to approve Resolution 24-R-53. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-54.
Resolution to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Montgomery County for detailed design and right-of-way phase of improvements for the Dayton International Airport Northeast Logistic Access Project.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Vandalia has partnered with Montgomery County Engineers Office for the roadway improvement to Northwoods Boulevard, North Dixie Drive, and Lightner Road. The Engineers Office is a sponsor of the project. They had previously applied for Transportation Review Advisory Council, or track funding, and were successful in obtaining 1.6 million, or 80% of the $2 million cost for preliminary engineering and design work. We previously entered into an agreement with the Engineers Office to share proportionally with them the local cost. The Engineers Office also applied in May of '24 for additional track funding for the detailed design, $160,000, and the right-of-way portion of the project, 1.8 million. They are asking the city of Vandalia to enter into another cost-sharing agreement to assist with the local share of the project. The city's local share of this portion of the project is based on an estimated cost, based on estimated cost, would be $276,000.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 24-R-54 as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Falek, and a second by Councilman Lewis, to approve Resolution 24-R-54 as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Then we have Resolution 24-R-55.
A resolution authorizing the city manager and/or his designee to enter into a five-year agreement with Metro FiberNet LLC for telecommunications services.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. With the recent addition of the restroom facility and the planned construction of an outdoor amphitheater at the Vandalia Art Park, internet connectivity is necessary to monitor security cameras and to provide wireless internet access for park visitors and event participants. Future enhancements may include digital signage and other internet-connected amenities and services. The city of Vandalia relies on Metronet for internet connectivity and point-to-point connections between several of our city buildings. They have conducted a site survey and provided us with a five-year service agreement and cost estimate. Given the critical role of the connectivity in maintaining security, supporting events, and enhancing the visitor's experience at the art park, IT Manager Davey is recommending that we waive formal bidding and authorize the, me, to enter into a five-year contract with Metronet for a cost of $175 per month.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I may. I move that we approve Resolution 24-R-55.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan, and a second by Councilwoman Fars, to approve Resolution 24-R-55 as presented. Any questions from comments?
I just had a question, just because I forgot to ask it the last time. Is this video recording, is it live, so that, like, the police department can chime into it if they need to, or overnight?
I believe so, but the man with the answer to that question's behind the curtain, running the technology. So when we get that answer, I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-56.
A resolution authorizing the city manager and/or his designee to enter into a three-year agreement with Alta Fiber for telecommunications services.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This three-year agreement with Alta Fiber would essentially renew a previous three-year agreement that we've gone month-to-month on with Alta Fiber. They provide the analog business phone lines and services to the city. We wanted to have another three-year agreement to ensure their commitment to the service. That three-year agreement has a monthly cost of $849.66 per month.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 24-R-56 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars, and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley, to approve Resolution 24-R-56 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-57.
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the emergency purchase and installation of a new fire alarm system for the Justice Center requested by the Parks and Recreation Department from Fast Tech Alarms and Telecommunications Services LLC in the amount of $84,186.56.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Clark is recommending the emergency replacement and installation of a new fire alarm system at the Justice Center. The current alarm system is original to that building, 23 years, and is beyond end-of-life expectancy. Under normal circumstances, the cost to purchase and install the fire alarm system would meet the requirements for competitively bidding the project. But due to ongoing concerns and issues with the current system and the urgency to replace the system in a timely manner, we feel that proposal pricing that we have received is the most prudent direction to take. The scope of the work for this new fire alarm system will include voiceover system installation, equipment, material supply, services, and labor to replace the current system. Our chief building official and electrical inspectors have secured detailed proposals and service quotes for this emergency replacement, with prices ranging from $84,000 to $133,000. Given the critical role of the system in providing a safe building environment, we are recommending approval to enter into a contract with Fast Tech Alarms and Telecommunications Services LLC of Cincinnati for the emergency replacement of the Justice Center fire alarm system, based upon their submitted proposal for $84,186.56.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 24-R-57.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley, and a second by Councilman Falek, to approve Resolution 24-R-57. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have an ordinance in the first reading, that being Ordinance 24-20.
An ordinance rezoning 4.535 acres of land located at 6213 Miller Lane from residential single-family to highway business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance in first reading is seeking a rezoning from the current RSF-1 residential single-family district to the HB Highway Business District for a parcel totaling approximately 4.535 acres located at 6213 Miller Lane. The property is owned by Empowerment Temple. And on August 27th, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 to recommend its approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution, or sorry, Ordinance 24-20 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Falek, and a second by Councilman Lewis, to approve Ordinance 24-20 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no ordinances in their second reading, nor do we have any emergency ordinances. And that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, where we have a BZA 24-07, a variance for 7733 Brown School Road. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant has requested a variance permit the construction of, in addition to his detached garage, that would encroach upon the minimum 10-foot setback requirement at the property at 7733 South Brown School Road. The applicant has proposed, in addition, with a 3.5 to 4.6-foot setback from the lot line. On August 28th, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted 4-0 to recommend the approval.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the variance of the accessory structure setback at 7733 South Brown School Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Dugan, to approve the variance for the accessory structure setback at 7733 South Brown School Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting minutes of August 28th, the Civil Service meeting minutes of August 12th, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of May 15th, the Vandalia Development Corporation meeting minutes of June 3rd. Are there any comments or questions on those? I would just like to say, again, how much I appreciate everyone that has served on these boards. We review these minutes monthly, and the detail that these boards and commissions put into their questions and thought, it's outstanding. So appreciate every one of them. All right, next we have the August 2024 bill listing in the amount of $4,030,259.57, along with the monthly expenses over $50,000, and the purchase card detail in the amount of $24,138.69. And that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
I just wanted to thank everybody that came out to the Oktoberfest, and hope you all had a great time. Thanks to the volunteers. Also, I hope you guys had a great time if you came out to the Tatcha Truck, and I think the staff that put that together, that was wonderful. I did make a call to RTA, for the residents, and business owners that had been complaining about the issues at the bus stop right by the Rite Aid that closed, and they are going to be sending someone out at least every few days to drive past that and take a notice on what's been happening, and see if they can address the issues on their code of conduct on their end, and also reaching out to our Vandalia Police Department. So just wanted to make a note on that, that they are concerned about those issues as well. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fairst?
Nothing this evening, thank you, though.
Councilmember Falek?
Just one comment, and that's residents of Foxfire had their block party over the weekend and utilized the city's block party trailer, and got a lot of positive comments about that opportunity. I think everyone was surprised at the amount of equipment that comes in the box or in the comes in the box or in the block party trailer. So, just again, thank you to staff who were responsible for that project and getting it equipped. And at some point, I don't know if the season ends in October. Okay. So, maybe if we can just get an idea of how often that was used this first year to see. But I think it's been well-received. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
I just want to remind everyone that the deadline for registering to vote is October 7th. You have until then to get registered if you're not already.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. And I have no further comments. So, this meeting is adjourned.